You need to come on over to the forum.
Otherwise they're not responding.
He's right there.
Yeah, we don't have to spur anything.
Group.
He's got it. In the mirror, he's lost.
Oh.
Alright.
Well, if he has discussion on it, he has to either do an open forum or come out and state that what he is. And his reasons. Is Melissa coming? She's not gonna be here today. I'm sitting here trying.
I'll be good.
I know you won't be able to talk to me.
We're on.
Where?
Where?
Lloyd.
Lloyd.
Lloyd. Ready?
Yeah, absolutely. Wait one second.
Yes, sir, we're running behind. Do you have any sort of forum? There's none over there? You got some?
All different ideas.
Okay. I'm sure your wife or sister. Or no.
No, I don't know part of this.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and get this meeting called Orders by Minutes at 2:00 after 7:00. So. Uh, roll call. Jill.
Here.
I am here. Lloyd.
Here.
Ben.
Here.
We got Wendy filling in for Dale tonight. We have Justin, oh, no, Mark. Justin is down at the end while we're showing. And Melissa is absent today. What?
As is our 28th.
Yes. Well, I thought he'd be. Okay. Let's stay with the fun, ladies.
The United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any open forums?
We sure do.
Tonight. Okay. We have one open forum from San Juan. And we will put that under six E. And we need to make some amendments to this agenda. Which is, under the consent agenda, we are adding item E, Wright County Maintenance Agreement.
And also, under ten, new business inspector.
Under ten? Okay, under new businesses, while we're adding, item D is the proclamation for schools. Yes, that comes first. And then, E will be... You want, do you want it under C? Is that what you're thinking about?
Yeah, it should be out of the C.
Okay, so apparently, under new business, item C, we're adding West Metro Building Inspector. And then, under refining and zoning, um, E, item four, the approval of Barry Reimberger. And then, group. And that would be, that is the X. Is there an approval for the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendments.
I'll second.
I'll in favor. I.
Aye.
Any pause? Motion passes, four and zero. Then we have the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Do you have a question, anything on, um...
On what?
Pinkstone.
Do you have a question on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, on the second page, page two of the accounts payable, there's a public computer report, which is the monthly fee. But right now, you think that is public computer account for a computer replacement? Who got that new replacement?
Um, Jessica and Dale. Jessica and Dale got new computers. Theirs were from 2011, that was.
So there was two.
Yep, and that's all the installation, all the program.
That makes forty-one thousand. We're going to produce a third. Can't quite follow that.
Justin, Mark, Wendy.
Um, the biggest majority of that was for Garfield Avenue project. And that was pretty much all of the project, all the construction that actually, you did not get an invoice for the... From last month, you didn't have an invoice for Garfield Avenue. So that actually included, um, two months, plus there's additional two weeks on there. So that included like...
September 23rd to December 1st.
Yeah.
And it's thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars for Garfield.
So that should be, uh, that would've cost the tax there, is that true?
No. For Garfield?
Yes.
That was for the construction inspection and, uh, observation of, of Garfield. That was, that was part of the total project budget that you approved.
And you didn't have a figure?
Yeah, there was a figure in there for that. Yep. Yep.
It just seems kind of high.
No, it was, it's all in line with the total project budget you approved with the mortgage contract.
Um, anything else, Lloyd? I know consent?
No.
Okay, I just have Tara Merck, and he's not here. How many months is that for the fifty-eight ninety-two for Merk?
Um, it's, I think, second, probably second or third quarter, maybe? It's from April 4th through June 30th.
Oh. Alright. Under this, Wendy, do we have to, it's separate than the resolution, right?
What's that?
The 201804 acceptance of donations?
That's a resolution that we do every year, just accepts, it's just saying the city's accepting the donation.
Somebody said it too, right?
Yeah.
Yep, fine. And then, on Sean's vacation carryover, um, eighty hours. Is there a deadline that we need to put on that? To take it at, by a certain date?
Well, you have to take it by the end of the year.
Right, but we're, um, he's asking approval to carry it over since they were so short-staffed. And...
What did you do to Sean next, or, uh, other people are gone?
I helped run the plants. Love snow, did my job. Managed to keep the trains on track.
You mean, there's no reason why you couldn't go on vacation?
Other than that, at times, me and Jason would be alone here.
Well, I know that, and Jason's been fighting alone all along, ever since, you know, for the last month or so. No. So I really don't feel that that was, uh, called for.
I feel that's interesting, because I had a conversation with the both of them three weeks ago? Was it three weeks ago?
If, Justin and, oh, I'm sorry, Sean and Jason.
And I guess I didn't feel like that was the attitude presented.
You know, we make up rules and regulations, we talk about ordinances, and this is what we do, we always change.
But if, if Sean would've taken vacation in the time of October 31st until last Wednesday, when Dan returned, that would've left Jason by himself? And he couldn't really take that vacation in there, because...
That's kind of, you know, not leaving a man.
Poor business practice.
It's a good business practice to have two people there, but I mean...
Sean legally can't do that work anyway, because that's forty-nine hours.
Well, him and Jason worked it out, and they, they worked. You know, I mean, it's, they had to do what they had to do, and they got the job done. So, and then, to be, to be fair, too, we also told him that at the same time that if come April, when Jay, when, yes, Jason's time comes up, and if he hasn't had a chance to carry over his, you know, use up his vacation, he can carry over as well. Depending council approval, of course, but, you know. So, but is there a deadline, then, that he has to use this by three months, six, whatever?
Right away.
First quarter? Yeah. Means of four thirty, deadline?
Or just pay him, just write him the check for the eight dollars.
I'd rather have him go on vacation and not set a check out. What?
Well, it costs the same thing either way. Except he'll be gone.
Okay. Is there then a deadline that we need to set for Sean to be able to use vacation? Do you have a deadline?
I would recommend April 30th, provided that's the last day of April. Yeah.
Okay. Ben, does that work for you?
That's fine.
Okay. Lloyd?
No.
So are we... Well, no, because it's all under the consent agenda.
That's fine, no.
So, okay. So, April 30th? We will set as a deadline, Sean, 2018? Uh, okay, any other questions on the consent agenda?
I don't know.
Okay. Motion to approve, then?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. With the stipulation of Sean using the eighty hours by end of April.
Thank you, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, Ben?
Aye.
Oh, aye, Jill?
Aye.
Melissa? Lloyd?
No.
Motion passes three, zero.
Three.
Three, one. I have Melissa on the radio, I'll second. Okay, open forum, we have two. First is Abigail. Can I know if Sarah can come in?
She's here.
Alright, you need to come up to the podium, state your name and address, and the reason you are here.
I'm hearing council. Abby Myers, my address is 1007 Kristoff Court. I'm just, um, requesting that the city allow a speed study on Clemente Avenue from 12th, US Highway 12 Southwest to Clemente, to the city limits, into the city limits. It's thirty miles an hour right now. And I did a little research, and it's not considered an urban district. It's just very slow. There's a handful of houses there, maybe four or five. And that's my request.
Is there a reason behind, just because it's slow?
It's very slow. And, um, I was pulled over on 45. I still luckily have a friend driving around here who let me go. But, um, I don't think 45 was an excessive speed at all. I think 55 might be a little too fast on that road, but I think 45 would be reasonable. Just requesting that.
And an average speed study is how much? Anybody believe?
Um, mayor and council, uh, if you want to proceed with changing that speed limit, um, you have a couple options. One would be, um, it would qualify as what's called a rural residential district, which you can change it to a rural residential speed limit of thirty-five miles per hour. And that does not require the approval of the Commissioner of Transportation. Uh, so that is one option, is to raise it to thirty-five, and that requires no approval by the end of that. The other option is to request a, uh, speed study by resolution to the Commissioner of Transportation. And that does require a resolution. And I do not, I am not a hundred percent positive if there's a cost to the city for that or not. I would say if that's something council wants to consider, um, you direct staff to prepare a resolution and get some more details on, on that for next meeting.
Okay. So then, once that resolution comes, and same in that, does the speed study, what if they say it's 55? What is our, what are our options? If we decide that we don't want 55, but 45 would be perfect, do we have a statement?
We would clarify that for you at one next, next meeting, if that's what you're pursuing. But I believe that you are stuck with, um, if you do a speed study and it shows going up higher than thirty, you are forced then to, um, utilize, to post that, that speed.
Whatever they...
Whatever that comes back at. So, you know, potentially, it could be up to fifty-five miles per hour.
It could bite us in the butt.
The other thing to consider on that is there is, uh, there is bike lanes on that road as well.
Correct.
Um, and there is some special language in the statute of all bike lanes, relative bike lanes as well. Well, designated lower, but it really doesn't apply in this case, because you're already at thirty. We're talking about making an increase in health, so...
Right, because that damages our concern, is the bike lanes that are on there. And then, with the added housing developments, there's going to be so much more traffic out there with White Tail Ridge and developments in Forest Creek, so...
I drove thirty miles an hour, and I was so slow.
It's not so possible.
It really is.
I know.
I just, I feel like it's not though.
Aye.
I, I drive it every day, I don't have a problem driving thirty mile an hour, thirty, thirty-five. I mean, that's chill. She's...
You'd have slower.
She's right on his bumper, bashing the lawn.
I mean, I guess I look at this, you know, I've lived out there, you know, six years now. And I've, you know, I've never had a problem with it. I mean, I take my kids out on that road and riding bike, and I would rather have the Wright County Sheriff sit there and write the ticket to everyone going thirty-one faster over there, because do you know how many people fly down that road going fifty-five, sixty mile an hour?
A lot.
Go, go out there in the summer.
Well, I saw someone ride the stop sign this morning, like, didn't even exist. But, I mean, he was, that was unreasonable, but...
I've been, I've been going thirty, and I've been, someone blew around me going at least sixty mile an hour. I'm, I can tell you this, I'm not in favor of it. I, I, I just, I'm not, I mean, it, uh, I've been out there with my kids alongside the road, and they're, you know, I used, when I used to go running, I'd run out there, and there's a handful of cars that, you know, I mean, they're just not obeying the speed limits, and they're, you know, and that to me, I mean, it's, I, I see it as more of a hazard, if you're raising the speed limit, people are going to drive faster on it. And I see that becoming more of a, an issue than what it is now.
I'm torn. You know my opinion, because I've posted on the Facebook page. Um, and I guess, you know, kind of reflecting a little bit more on it, has, I don't know if you may be said, whereas White Tail continues to fill in, and Forest Creek, you know, completely fills in, there will be more cars, and I do think more families will utilize that, those walking trails, at least until something else becomes. And honestly, while some people said, you know, I'm sure cars are respectful, I know I scoot over, it's far and few, honestly. And people fly by, people on their phones, they're not paying attention. At, even at thirty, they're not paying attention. So now imagine, you know, forty-five, not paying attention, and somebody trying to run, or my, when Kaylee was trying to learn how to ride her bike, and close to those lanes, certainly I'm responsible in urging her to scoot over, and I'm close and stuff. But even so, if somebody's, if people aren't willing to scoot over, and you're going fifty-five, that's fast. And that lane for that bike is not that wide, all things considered. Um, so just give them where I am, too. I don't know that I'm in the neighborhood either. Had you brought this to me five years ago? Absolutely, because there was no development, there was no movement, there was thirty houses occupied. I mean, it was the street was dead, and it's just not the case anymore.
And she's thirty, so slow.
I know, because I guess, I guess I would be, I would be residential around it. I mean, it's, everywhere you go, it's thirty. So, and unfortunately, that's going to be residential, you know, I mean, without houses and stuff.
I mean, I can see it in the neighborhood, of course.
Right, right.
Thirty sometimes feels fast, even, in the neighborhood, but, yeah.
What do we mean?
No, I agree with you guys.
I would be fine with increasing it to thirty-five. I don't think that seems excessive, like, any weekends, and that might be a knock. But, I don't know if that would make any difference to you. What's the difference between thirty and thirty-five, right?
Yeah, in that distance, it's not going to make a hell of a difference time-wise.
Right.
Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Luke?
Got a couple things. Patrick Flug, 707 Brook Circle West. In regards to more of a complaint form. Back in Ju- June, when we had the Army Corps of Engineers here. I, myself, and several other residents that were bringing cases of water up to the guys. Bringing cases of water down here. Numerous times in conversation. Myself being former Army, served during the end of the Vietnam era. I'm kind of appalled at the bills that we've received from Bolton and Mink over that time period, being that on numerous occasions, and talking with the lieutenant that was in command out there, making statements that, oh, we're standing around with our thumbs up our butts, because, uh, the engineers aren't on site. They took off, and they've got the tracer cord in the back of their vehicle, so we can't fill in the hole. Numerous things like that. I just, you know, Bolton and Mink told us that, uh, Spencer would be on site to do soil testing. Spencer wasn't always on site. Yeah, we got bills in excess of sixty thousand dollars per month of June. So, that's one thing I'm complaining about. The other thing refers back to an employee with the city that I made a complaint about that I don't feel was handled properly. I feel the statement that was made was completely disheartening to anybody that's ever wore a uniform, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard. These men and women that worked out there were not inexperienced. Some of them, not a lot of experience. But that entire crew that we had, on and off, had built, uh, air bases in Kuwait, Afghanistan. We even had crew members in there from the Vietnam era that had gone back into the reserve, that had built landing LZs in Vietnam on hilltops. So for that person to make a statement that their inexperience caused us numerous delays and problems is not justified at all. And for a city that's supposed to be a blue ribbon, or a yellow ribbon city, I tell you what, if I was sitting in Iowa, and I read that report, that statement, I would never come back to Montrose. I don't care if this town got wiped out. I'd be damned if I knew my unit back here. And I still think the residents of Montrose and the Army Corps of Engineers from Iowa City deserve a public apology from that person. That's all I have to say.
Ring County Sheriff's, correct?
Eddie Hermanson, Ring County Sheriff's Office. I assume that you all got your December, um, deal. Captain Derringer has spoken to me, and I've been transferred to work three days in the city down here out of my six, at a three over in, in Delmont. I assume that you've gotten my business card with my cell phone provided to the city. Okay. If you need, need additional, just let me know. And I'm just trying to figure out, uh, what you guys are interested in. I just started here, I only worked two days in the city this last week. So this weekend, I'll come back, Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, but... So I'm still trying to get a handle on what's all going on, so I thought I'd just say hello. All you guys looking for, obviously, would like to have an issue on Clemente, that might be what happens. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I just said that you just heard the issue.
Yeah, exactly. So if there's anything else, or there's something, you know, that has come up, I want you to feel free to give my cell phone a call. If I don't respond right away, I might be on my days off, but I'll respond as soon as possible. Um, my email address is on there as well. Anything you need to report, obviously, the sheriff's office should go through Communication Center immediately, but, um, if there's something like, you know, a traffic issue or something like that, I'll do the, I'll take, take those calls and, uh, make sure that we get the proper personnel besides Howard and myself with the other deputies, and be the line of communication for you guys.
Appreciate you coming by.
Okay. I've been doing this a long time, so...
Alright, welcome.
This is my twenty-third year, so... Did you guys have anything?
Are you going to be in Montrose for an extended period of time?
Well, probably the next year.
Okay.
Yeah. barring any other unforeseen changes. I guess, uh, work with other cities and other issues, similar, same or similar type things, so... Do you live in Buffalo, or wherever? Yes, I live in Buffalo. Do you guys have anything else?
Well, our biggest thing is community policing. You know, I mean, I know it's kind of, well, it's nice today, but it's been a little chilly, so, you know.
Right.
Um, that's our big issue. And then the other issue that we see a lot on social media, unfortunately, is how you guys are placed throughout the city for long extended periods of time.
What do you...
So like, I know you, I've been at many riding lots, so I, I kind of understand a little more now.
Okay.
But when you're filling out your paperwork.
Yeah.
You know, um, a lot of people see you, like, say, this parking lot for an hour or two hours, or, you know, whatever. Um, the school parking lot is a big one, and I know it's all for reception reasons, is what we've been told. So, that's a big thing that we have to, to be more physical.
Well, we're moving around, but also, you know, for like myself, working the day hours, so if I come on at ten o'clock, I don't want to be necessarily sitting in the school parking lot when there's kids there, but after they've left, now would be an opportunity for me to be there, potentially have, you know, playground issues, or parents coming up, because I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but most elementary schools also have a daycare, like, after school type thing. So sometimes, that can get dicey with parental child custody issues, or this, this whole moron stuff. But yes, it's been communicated, and I'm going to reiterate that to the deputies, to keep moving around as, as much as, as much as they can, but if you've been on the ride along, you also know how cumbersome the paperwork has gotten. And we just had team meetings, and we got some additional hats, so... And it's, it's not going to get any better anytime soon. Anything else?
Do you guys have...
I, I ran the numbers, just so you're aware. You probably, certainly could yourself, too. And the numbers, um, for December, uh, compared to 2016 December are about the same.
Okay.
They were close, as far as like, closer service and that kind of stuff. A few more for 2016. I think there was like another thirty or something for 2016. But pretty close to the same.
Is there any kind of an update on vandalism through the Christmas season? That, you know, where you saw...
Okay, I didn't, uh, I haven't taken any of those reports, or been pretty to them or anything, then. I've just kind of come in, and I haven't done a lot of research on purpose. I haven't asked a lot of other deputies' opinions on purpose. I haven't asked a lot of other deputies' opinions on purpose. So I can find things out myself, so it looks like I'm slowly learning, there's a reason for it. I don't want to get swited to look at things in anyone else's eyes other than my own. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, council meetings. Uh, I can start. I attended the Park and Rec meeting. There was a couple of meetings at City Hall that I attended. I attended last month's council meeting. I feel like last month was relatively slow for council activities. I have not attended the Montrose Days committee yet because that falls on the second. Sunday of the next week is next week. Or this coming Sunday, I guess, so everyone will get it. So, for anybody that wants to come to the Montrose Days meeting, seven o'clock, City Hall. Be there, they need more people. That's all I got.
And about all I got is the council meetings, since what's the scope on?
Council, Fire Department, and then for Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, we did our cookie giveaway. Good event, and had some pretty good turnout, so.
I was just at council. Different meetings at City Hall. Park and Rec. Do you do anything else in December? No, that's, that's it. Moving on to Kevin.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Inside your packet is the activity report. We ended two thousand seventeen with one hundred and seventy-six calls total. Down about forty-seven calls from last year. A lot of departments are kind of down on that same percentage and stuff, so nothing too earth-shattering. As far as the call load goes, most of the ones that we're down on are medical type calls, not the actual fires or mutual aids or actual service calls. It's just the medicals that seem to go down, so. Also included, not included in the activity report, but just to make a quick special mention, I'd like to thank Jason from Public Works for helping us get our skid unit out of our truck along with some other tasks that he's helped us with here so far this month. And then also one other one I forgot to put in the activity report is a thank you to Ben for being an active council aide on to the Fire Department, showing up at our meeting with trainings and taking a vested interest in it, so we appreciate that.
So he may be submitting an application to the Fire Department?
Jill, do you notice the beard?
He keeps the beard for a reason, we established that.
Yeah. They have offered to maybe outshine it many times.
I think you should, can you invite me?
So unless there's any questions in the activity report. Next item on there is resignation of firefighter Tom Cortissus. Tom is leaving us, he's moving out of town, so he's no longer eligible to be on the Fire Department, so I need a motion to have him effectively resigned effective twelve thirty-one seventeen.
I'll make a motion to accept Tom's resignation effective twelve thirty-one seventeen. I was trying to.
Uh, Ben.
Aye.
Light.
Aye.
I want I and Jill.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. How long has he been with the fire department?
Five years. Um, next is just an informational item. We've selected the Fire Department officers for two thousand eighteen. I was appointed as the Fire Chief. Matt Menard was appointed as the Assistant Fire Chief. And then the captains are Tom Wine, Craig Otto, and Kelly Stoll. So same as last year for all the captains and all the officers, so. Those were selected and go into effect the first of January. Um, the last item that's not on the agenda, but just a quick reminder, we have a Firefighters Relief Association Prime Rib and Shrimp Dinner coming up February third, two thousand seventeen. It's the first Saturday in February from five to eight P.M. And will be made presentations at seven P.M. for retired firefighters, people who have left us firefighter of the year and top responders, so. Please join us, and if you want tickets, they're available at City Hall or through any firefighter, and we can get tickets for the raffle or the dinner itself.
What's the cost of the dinner?
Fifteen dollars. Fifteen dollars, and we do offer a kids' dinner for five dollars. All right? Or you can, or you can talk to Steve if you've got tickets.
Good evening, Hall. First thing I want to do is remind you that skate day is coming up on Saturday the twentieth at Carver Field from four to six. We are still in need of gently used skates, if anybody has any. We also want to thank the Fire Department and Public Works profusely for all the work and giving those things ready. We know that you guys have put a lot of crap on Facebook. We want to thank you for all the hard work, because you worked really hard and gave up and you wanted as quick as you possibly could. We also like to thank whoever made the skate helper things for last year's event. They are out there again for the news, and whoever made them, we want to publicly thank you for them, because they have been a godsend, little kids love them.
Is there one out there currently?
If they went, did not go out there today, they will be out there.
There's four out there. There's three in his hand that there's four. Did they go out today?
I did ask that they went out today.
Okay. Okay. We thought we were going to go with that.
I just want to remind the public that we have one pleasure ring and one hockey ring, so that the little kids don't get hit with pucks. Lights are on daily from dusk until ten P.M. when the parks close. We have also started a game day. Councilperson Menard was gracious enough to make some great flyers for that and get the information out there, and I'm sure the two of you can speak to that a little bit more. It is coming up this Wednesday. Reminder, we will be hosting a town hall meeting here February, it's February twenty-sixth. We're not sure if the doctor's going to be in right now. It sounds like it might be kind of a hodgepodge of suggestions, like a suggestion box type thing. We did take pictures tonight of the award for twenty seventeen Holiday Lighting Contest. I don't know if you guys may not have seen that, but it was seven forty-four Brook Circle East, which was Marla and Los Angeles. We'll have pictures up for that. Later on, it's been a big deal. People are really, really excited about winning these contests. They are just absolutely giddy. I think that's pretty much it. We did have one housekeeping thing that's completely changed in years a bit. Over a year ago, Park and Rec had a request to approve from the council to have all of our parks treated exactly the same as the community center, with the deposit needed, you know, the contract, all that sort of things, in case there's any damage done to a park that we're able to cover those costs and not with tax pay money. And it was approved, but somewhere along the way it got dropped and it never got instituted. So I'm asking for reaffirmation of that from council tonight, and asking for an immediate institution of that. Rule, ordinance, request, whatever it is that you want to do. So, I'm asking for that.
Was it my resolution? There was a whole draft on that. A document, like a pull-out document. It was super nice and concise and clear and an extra charge for electric.
There was discussion after that about electric, because I think it was
I know there was.
Like twenty-five dollars for electric, and then probably electric that gets used as nowhere's.
Correct.
Right, right.
I think that was back with ninety-nine.
As far as she told it, we have no clue.
Dale, would you like to?
Yeah, I wonder if we could ask Dale to look for that and then put it on the agenda for next month, so that we can maybe put it to Park and Rec for next month, so they can go review it and make sure it's still accurate. And then they can do a recommendation to us, I guess. Might be the easiest, so we can actually know what we're requesting.
Can you tell me the date of town hall meeting?
Uh, the twenty-sixth of February, seven P.M. here provided the.
The town hall.
The county is hosting that? Yes. Yes, and I believe that there was something on here that maybe Monday is taking over for Dale, I don't know. But there was, it says Resolution twenty eighteen dash oh one Park Shelter Grant, and I believe that that's just part of the DNR grant resubmission.
He's got it on the agenda.
Okay. So, someone else will be speaking to that, not me. But I do want to also thank Dale. We've been dealing a lot with finding grants, working on upcoming grants, finding as much money as we possibly can. There's lots of things going on in the works, and once we can publicly share them with you, we will. But he has been of great value and great help to us for the park. That is it, any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean. Oh, sorry, resolution. So I can speak on behalf, I do know he said, um, this was the same grant that was filed last year that Maggie did with the DNR grant, that Justin helped her get all the numbers and everything for. I believe, I believe he talked to someone at the state or at the DNR, and they said the grant that was submitted was very well-written, we could just use that one again. We just needed a new resolution approving that grant to be resubmitted. Pretty sure that's.
That's well-stated, I believe. This is for the Department of Public Works.
Yeah. When does it do? By March.
It's written here March thirtieth.
Oh, yeah.
The top paragraph.
He just has the numbers backwards. It says thirty-three instead of forty. So, but that's, yeah, so if you do by the thirtieth, then he can just resubmit it.
All right, I then will make a motion to have Dale proceed with Resolution twenty eighteen award for Park and Shelter Grant.
I'll second that motion.
All right, I want I, Lloyd.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
Jill.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Now, Sean.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Couple items, one is a tabled item from December. Resolution dash twenty seventeen twenty-eight, water system rate increase. It was tabled in December due to the council wanted more information. They supplied that information during the past month. So council can entertain any discussion at that.
Any discussion from the council or questions? Everybody get the information they need?
I did.
Okay. Is there that in motion?
I'll make a motion approving Resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-eight for Resolution increasing the Montrose water system rates.
Do you want to do them right?
Sure, for the tier one rate, to the price of five thirty-five per thousand gallons. The tier two rate will go to five dollars eighty-nine cents per thousand gallons. And the tier three rate will go to six dollars and forty-eight cents per one thousand gallons. I actually have one of those twenty-five cents, sorry. That's okay, thank you. So I know it was listed here, what do I do? I know. Uh, okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, um, Lloyd.
Aye.
I want I, Jill.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor. Second item on the agenda tonight in Public Works is we have conducted the interview process for maintenance worker one. As the memo states, we had nine applicants received. Staff and I went through those applicants and we came to a decision to interview for the finalists of the applicants. And after the interviewing process, it was an endless decision from the interviewing group to recommend hiring James Schwartz Jr. for the maintenance worker one position, pending council approval at the step one rate of sixteen fifty-eight, which is the approved wage for that position. I made a motion to, uh, for approval.
Did he have any experience prior to doing the office allocation?
He had some farming background, plus he had some training schooling. And I think he's, out of the group that we had, he was by far the best candidate for the job.
He has a lot of background, uh, mechanical experience as well, which will help him in a lot of ways. So I will then make an approval to hire James Schwartz Jr. for the maintenance worker one position at an hourly rate of sixteen fifty-eight. I'll second that.
All right, Jill.
Aye.
I want I, Lloyd.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Wendy, are you doing planning and zoning?
Well, I wasn't at the meeting, but I can do some of it. Minutes are in there, so I don't know if you've had a chance to review that. If anybody has any questions. Second on the list is Resolution twenty eighteen dash zero two is to amend the interuse permit for the turning property, those solar apartments on the turning property. So originally, when Sunshare came to us, they asked for, I believe it was a twenty-seven year interuse permit. That was to give them a year to build, twenty-five years to operate, and one year to decommission if, if everything was done after twenty-five years. If not, they would come back and ask for an extension, but because they got buildings so late, they are asking for us to extend the, um, the permit for one more year to allow them to get through October twenty-fifth of two thousand forty-three. So, because it's just up and operating, and then that way it'll run twenty-five years if it's done at that point, then they need to take it down, the decommission would be for the year. So it's just a, it's actually just a resolution to extend the interuse permit for the extra year. And then I believe the other reason was to install a storage unit, twenty foot by eight foot by eight and a half foot storage unit to store all the stuff they need out of the plant itself. And all of this was brought before planning and zoning, at their last planning and zoning meeting in December. And planning and zoning's recommendation to the council is to approve both the interuse permit and the storage for them.
I wonder Wendy if we need to do this, because I understand that they're changing hands. Have you heard anything about that?
There's still, it's still part of Sunshare. They go now by Generate, Minnesota.
Energy.
Yeah, but it's still, but Sunshare is still involved in it, because we still deal with Chuck Beisner from Sunshare, so I don't know if that's just another part of their company, or.
Well, we understand they're going to take over Sunshare, they bought them on completely.
That I don't know, because I just talked to Chuck Beisner from Sunshare these days, and I'm not positive.
I'm surprised that he didn't mention that. And as far as the extension goes, the reason of the delay wasn't really because of the weather, it was their own.
They just didn't build it in time, yeah.
Yeah, it was their own doing, so I don't know why we would have to extend that.
Well, the extension is because they, they are contracted, I believe, with the power company for twenty-five years. So because they are one year behind, they would need twenty-five years, that would, then if, if in twenty-five years they're no longer going to be with the power company, they still need that extra year to take it down. So this is giving, this is to make sure that they take it down if it needs to be taken down. And they don't just walk away because the permit is.
Expired.
Expired. So this gives them the extra year to make sure it gets taken down or gets, you know, decommissioned. The storage building, I don't know a lot about. I just know they're, it says in here they were asking for a storage container.
Essentially, they're going to put it on class five.
Okay. Because I wasn't at the, I wasn't at the plan show, so.
What was the spot on that storage during that discussion?
It was okay, as long as it was not be on class five or better than, just like we do for the residence discuss. And then there was discussion which site to put it on, and I think we agreed on West Side.
They want location number one?
Yeah.
All right, then is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept Resolution twenty fifteen dash twenty-four changing the date from, this is ten twenty-five, four, uh, two thousand forty-two to ten twenty-five, two thousand forty-three. And their shipping container to be on class, unapproved, whatever. And their shipping container to be on Class, approved, whatever. On approved service. Excuse me.
Is it 2015-Dash-24? It's 2018-Dash-Zero Two.
Okay. Sorry. Resolution 2018-Dash-Zero Two.
All right. Is there a second? I'll second it. Lloyd.
No.
Ben.
Aye.
Jill.
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Motion passes three to one. Are you doing the lot change too, Wendy?
So the proposed, he has proposed minimum lot with changes of memo in the packet. I guess at the December council meeting, he mentioned something about it, about possibly looking at increasing our lot width from 80 feet to 100 feet, which would then give a minimum lot size from 10,000 square feet where we're at now of 12,000 square feet. I'm not sure if that's been discussed with the planning and zoning or to what extent it's been discussed with planning and zoning, because they already said, I don't attend their meetings. With our Dale here, I don't know a whole lot about it.
He meant he just mentioned it, but isn't he just asking for, to check into it?
He's asking for approval to hold a public hearing, but maybe, maybe before we do that, it might be worth our while to talk about it. And maybe meet with, we're going to have a workshop anyway for some other things. And maybe we can invite planning and zoning to the workshop and talk about this so everybody's on the same page and we, everybody knows what, what he's looking for. Because I, I don't really know a whole lot about it either, so.
Yeah.
So if you want to maybe table it until a workshop discussion or something, it's up to you guys, but...
I'll make a motion to table it until at least next meeting.
Does everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
I second the motion.
I mean, I don't know if we can...
So table it as a workshop?
No, it's consented to take on a workshop.
I think we should get it on a workshop.
And then the last is the appointments of Brue, Luke, and Barry Reitberger.
Since Dale's not here though, was then Lloyd, was there any discussion on either one of them?
I don't know.
Barry, Barry, Brue at planning and zoning?
No, not really. But, but anyway, don't you think we should probably table that also because of the requests were different? May not. Pardon me, are you talking about the F, the city engineer?
No, right now we're under planning and zoning. Item four, approval of Barry Reitberger, Brue Plou for planning and zoning.
Four must have been inserted.
It was an addition.
Yes, it was an addition.
They, they mentioned that they approved those.
Okay. My only thing is then, obviously, we all know who Brue Plou is. But Barry Reitberger, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with who he is. He is the current department manager down at Montrose Manor. And he's been manager for the past five-plus years, just a little over five years, I believe. And in my talking with him, the concern was ordinance enforcement down there? Or next to none of ordinance enforcement? How can you come in and, you know, make ordinances and force ordinances within the city, but you're not enforcing ordinances within down where you're responsible for? And the response that he had given was, they're his neighbors, and it's really not his job to do that. And he said that when he took over that position, that he would not do that because they're neighborly. So that's my only concern is, this is your neighbors as well, so... Very nice guy, very nice guy. He's also a city planner for Wright County. So he's got a lot of knowledge. But that's just, I mean, I just wanted to inform you guys of a little bit of background if you didn't know anything already, so.
Yeah, we should just make the motion for Brue Plou.
Why not give Barry a shot, though? I mean...
I mean, I'm just giving the information. So, I mean, the concern down there was to, you know, there was three homes down there that needed to be condemned. And as a park manager, you kind of let them go to where the Wright County Public Health had to get involved in that, so...
I just, I guess my, my only thought is that, you know, as a park manager, you're one person, you're one body. And it's, and I'm not trying to get excuses. However, when you're a commission, there's four other people voting? Generally five? Or...
There would be a six.
So, yeah, so there would be five other people voting. And so I'm not sure that it's really comparing apples to apples given the situation and, and the environment that we'd be in.
That's fine. Just give them a motion. So then is there a motion for these individuals? I'll make, you're doing it? You got it?
I'll make the motion for Brue Plou.
Well, we're, we're, we would do them separately anyway, so. So you're motioning for Brue, correct?
Right.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I'll vote aye. Ben.
Aye.
Lloyd.
Aye.
Jill.
Aye.
Motion passes to add Brue Plou to planning and zoning. And Barry.
I'll make a motion to add Barry Reitberger to the planning and zoning commission.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Ben.
Aye.
I will vote, I will give him a chance. Jill.
Aye.
Lloyd.
No.
Motion passes three, zero. No, three, one. Three, one, I keep forgetting that, sorry. Okay, everyone got that, thank you. City Engineer, Justin.
May I ask your questions?
Yes.
First of all, where's the city lawyer tonight?
He is at a other, committed to something else.
Well, he shouldn't be here. There's a table copy for, is that a RFP for Bolton and Mank? It just says table copy on the table?
I think it's an, for, I'm not sure. I believe it's information.
Well, it's basically how wonderful they are. But, you know, I thought we were done with these games years ago. They put something up, they just put table copy on it so nobody can have a copy to take to their seats and read it. We're damn tired of that. And I, and I have a question for regarding the city engineers. For Justin from Bolton and Mank and Sean from Public Works. You worked together on a lot of projects, correct?
Hold on. Can we, when that comes up later?
Well, let me ask you this. Do you socialize after hours together? Do you fish together? I've heard complaints. Maybe there's nothing to it.
Once a year, maybe.
What's that?
Once a year.
Probably you, Justin.
I would say that'd be more correct.
Is that a bit troubling? Seems to me that stinks.
I don't think it's troubling at all.
Well, of course you don't. You don't think it's troubling against the previous landlords.
No, we're not open forum then, Justin.
Pay your bills.
Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Before you, this evening, as consideration for proceeding with well number six and wellhouse number three project, this project is currently on the Public Facilities Authority funding list. It is listed in the fundable range for this coming year. If the city council wants to proceed with this project, in order to proceed with PFA financing for the project, you must have the design completed and have plans and specifications submitted to the Public Facilities Authority by March 29, 2018. If they are submitted after that time, you wouldn't, you wouldn't qualify for funding on this year's list. Essentially, you would have to apply again for next year to be put on the list again. And, you know, there'd be no guarantee of if PFA is funded or not. Typically, they are. Two years ago, there was an issue where the state legislature didn't pass a bonding bill. PFA was not funded, and therefore, there was no projects for the list. So you are regularly tied to the list right now, and you are in the fundable list, the fundable range. And so if you did want to proceed with the project, it'd be, you would, you would authorize us to proceed with plans and specifications. And the other thing that we could be done in order to proceed would be proceed with a test well. So we did obtain two quotes from two well drillers to do a test well on a proposed site, which is land that the city currently owns south of US Highway 12 and west of County Road 1. 10, sorry. 110, thank you. Self-improvement. And then property that the city acquired through the tax forfeiture. And we would just need to obtain an easement and gain access into and out of that property. And that would be the proposed site. So the test well would be, the local submitted by Trump companies, Wake Park, in the amount of $21,665. So that is to complete the test drilling and include the full analysis, including test pumping data. They determined that the site is suitable for a well, determine how deep the well needs to be, determine how many gallons per minute you can get out of that, determine the screen size and screen depth, all of that stuff. So I, you know, if you want to talk more about the project specifically, I can certainly run through that. Obviously, it's to replace the existing wellhouse number one that was built in the 1930s. And well number two and three, which one well has a crushed casing and the pump cannot pull. The second well pulls sand off from the op for when it's, when it's pumping. So that one is on standby right now.
Who was the other company that quote from?
That was from EHP Redder at Sunz.
Do you know what that amount was for?
That amount was for... 20, well, it was for $21,660, so it's actually $5 cheaper. But there's two things it didn't include. It didn't include abandoning the test well, and it also did not include electric resistivity log, which the Trump, which the Trump, they don't, each Redder doesn't do that. And the Trump did, does include that.
And both of those things would have to be done or are needed?
Yes.
So that would have been an additional cost to do.
Yes, that's part of the analysis of it. The electric resistivity log, log helps determine where, where the screen needs to be placed. So essentially, you don't end up pulling sand out of the op for like we're doing.
No.
Or they have the proper screen so we maximize the output for the well.
So that is the $21,665 is their cost from doing this work, correct?
That's correct.
And then what is the cost for us to proceed with the plans, this line from you?
That would be, well, the total project cost estimate in the report is $1,035,000, of which there's a contingency engineering light item for $205,000. And that includes about 10% contingency, about 15% engineering, which is $125,000. Breaking that down a little bit further, that's for full engineering for the full project. So just to complete the design and preliminary stuff, probably looking at somewheres around $50,000 to $60,000, somewhere in that neighborhood, to break us up through that, right? And then we also have to submit the application, the one application, to the Public Facilities Authority. So we need to work with your staff as well on getting all that paperwork submitted. And I know Wendy's gone through that process before. We have to submit audit copies of previous audits. And there's a whole bunch of paperwork information that is to be submitted by the deadline.
So that's on March 29th, in order to possibly get the funding, correct? And at a cost of around $50,000 to $60,000?
For the engineering. What's that?
To proceed?
Yes, that's correct, for the engineering. Plus the 22. Yep. That's part of the total project cost that's included in the total bid.
Which is part of the capital improvement plan.
Yeah, yeah, that's part of the million-dollar project cost. That's correct. And that includes, that's not just Bolton and Mank time either. That includes, you know, when you do a well and wellhouse, you have to, you hit HVAC, so it'd be mechanical. It'd be electrical. Structural, architectural. So it's all those different disciplines. So you're spreading it out over a number of different subconsultants that, you know, you have to have all of those disciplines involved in a building-type project.
For the million-dollar project.
Right. Or even for the upfront, the upfront portion, the plans and specification portion. Each one of those engineers has to do their design for that portion of the project.
Pardon me for interrupting you again, but the council, I'm sure you realize you need to table this until these RFPs are in from other engineering companies, get some other opinions on this. Thank you. Bob Chapman, by the way.
Is there any other discussion?
No, I can go into more detail about that, what that includes too. I mean, it's a demographic survey, it's boundary work. We have to, we have to work with the landowner, negotiate an easement, like I mentioned. So we'd have to do boundary work for that. We would have to determine those land acquisition needs, do a wetland delineation to make sure we're not in the wetlands, do a geotechnical investigation to make sure the soils are suitable for the building that it's built on. And then the preliminary design, we have to analyze those test wells, the test well data, do a water quality analysis. We would also plan for future, one additional well to be put on that site. So we'd design the building accordingly. And we would do the layout for that future well as well. Regulation verification work for Wright County on the access permit, the Department of Health, and building permit to make sure everything meets building code. And then do our final design, verity documents, including, including areas that I have already mentioned. And SCADA integration is another area that I haven't talked about. So I have to integrate the entire well and wellhouse into our entire SCADA system, which is the controls for controlling all of the infrastructure in the city. So that's another component. So it is a, it seems like a simple project, but it's fairly detailed. A lot, a lot of pieces to it, but...
So to reach the March 29th deadline, how much time would it, if, if we were to table this right now? And maybe look at it again next month? Which would bring us to February 15? Is that the next 12?
Yeah, we would not have enough time to, if you're not authorized anything, any work until after that date. Because they, the test well, people have to get it on their schedule. We have to do that. And then we have to, like I said, all the disciplines. I mean, there's not going to be enough, there's just not enough time to get it all submitted in a month. Less than a month, but by the time we get the test well data back. I mean, if you are talking about, if you're talking about proposals, you wouldn't, I mean, obviously, you wouldn't.
We wouldn't have proposals come back first three to five months anyway. If that's what you're saying, the RFPs.
Right, so then we might want to just table it because the well will last a month here.
No, if we, the reason we just did the water increase is because the deadline is what, Sean, March? To continue with the wellhouse and all that stuff?
Correct.
So that's with the state. We cannot put the state off. So even if we continue with this and still go with our RFPs, who knows what it'll bring with that? But at least the ball is rolling. We cannot table it, I should say, because it's funding for the city. You know, it's helping get these projects in motion, so...
Pardon me, just, don't you need other opinions? Whether you even need the wells for sure? I mean, maybe we do, but...
Right.
How about the second opinion you do with your doctor? How about the second opinion you do with your doctor? This is a million... Over a million dollars and, you know, Bolton and Milk, Milk, Milk.
Any discussion from council?
We waited last month. I mean...
No, we waited last month for the increase.
It's essentially the same... I mean, one item led to the next item. Right, right, both times. And so we knew it last month, so if we were going to question it, really, last month would have been the time. Or you had questions surrounding it, I guess.
Last month, if you're anything about item C and those.
Correct. Because it wasn't on the agenda.
So, okay, now would it be approved this now? And it'll be replaced, nevermind.
So then, I don't know exactly what could happen, but potentially Bolton and Mick could finish the project and then be done if they would have heard that. Or depending upon... Right.
The new company, and they finish it out.
Why hasn't there been more proposals? Hold on, you have to come up. Colleen Carlson. And he's major daddy's... I probably... He's Bob Chapman. I'm going to get him on the podium, so I know. Colleen Carlson's 1531, 48th Street, Southwest Montrose, Minnesota. Why has there not been more proposals submitted a year ago? If you guys have been working on it for so long, when I go to do something, and I know I'm going to do it, I get five proposals in the amount of time I need it. I don't say, okay, I'm going to spend a million dollars. I'm going to take so-and-so, and I'm just going to wait for them to give it to me, and then go get more. Why didn't we have three people or four people submitted before, way prior to this? If you guys knew you were increasing well rate, which you did a long time ago, why did we not have more companies knowing about this, putting in the proposals, giving us bids? When I do my well at my house, which I'm working on right now, which is a far cry from a million dollars, I've got a lot more proposals in an adequate amount of time. I do myself a year in advance. So to have one proposal and just to push it through is not fair, because if somebody comes through at $900,000 or $800,000 and saves us $100,000 or $50,000, that's a chunk of change. That's coming out of my dollar. Well, maybe not mine, because I live outside of the city. But it's a lot of money. And if it was your dollars being spent, your personal dollars, right?
Right, but you're also not comparing apples to apples, unfortunately, because you're looking at public-funded funded projects, and there's only a certain number of companies that can do this.
Why wasn't the other one notified?
I don't have an answer to that. Sean, can you enlighten us?
The plans and specs that we're asking for development is to allow the companies to bid on the project. They have to have plans and spec and know what they're bidding on. Then we look at when the bids come in, and hopefully, they're less than a million bucks. I hope they're half a million. But we have to be prepared for the worst.
But you can't just push one company through.
We're not pushing anybody through.
No, we're not.
What it would be, this would be approving Bolton and Mick to proceed, to proceed to do...
To get the plans and bids.
To look for other companies to do this. But in order for that, them, Bolton and Mick to do that, then we have to approve it at roughly around $50,000 to $60,000. Currently, not the million dollar project. They would be pushing it out to other companies.
And Bolton and Mick is going to get $125,000.
Well, they... Depends on...
That's their fee.
It's not a set fee, though.
It's not a set fee.
Instruction costs.
That is a high cost. It's a high cost rate. Now, this right now is only approving them to proceed to get the bids, to do the research and get the bids.
Prepare plans and specs up to bidding, which only costs $50,000 to $60,000 of the $125 total. So if you were to go ahead and bid the project out and approve a contract with a contractor to construct the project, then we would do additional construction oversight, contract administration, all that stuff. That would bring it out to $125,000.
Yeah, so you'll get your $125,000 on the regardless.
No matter what, we have to have an engineer to do it, so... We can't do the project without an engineer. So some engineer is going to get $125,000. Right, but right now, we're not looking at $125,000 right now. We're only looking at the... Exactly. Just to get the plans and specs. Just to get the plans and stuff going. And as we said, if we proceed with item C under new business, then Bolton and Mick would, if that was the way the council went, I'm sure would pass over that information if there was to be a new engineering company. Correct?
Yes.
Thank you. So, no, we're not spending... You know, that's not what we're discussing right now. Any further discussion?
Roy Henry is up.
Roy, come on up.
Hi, my name is Roy Henry, and I live at 600 Nelson Boulevard. And if we go along with a new well, I hope the city don't get burned like they did over there in Rose Haven, which that well got done over there. And we had a city engineer, I don't know who he was at the time of that, but everything got underlooked and everything. And pipes started leaking over there and everything, so they had to hire another outfit out of Wisconsin to come out and pull all the pipes and re-weld them and everything. And the people along... Our people over there had to use all the fire department hoses to hook water up to their houses, so they had water for all them houses back in that area. They don't want to see the city get burned again.
How long ago was that, Roy?
They're asking how long the well was...
Was that... Who was that recording on? Eighteen years Bolton and Mick has been there.
Because I watched them when they were doing that over there. And that's what they were doing Highway 12 23 years ago too, when all that was taking place out there.
So that was before this engine? Okay. Any other discussion? Comments? Proceeding. Motion?
I'll make a motion to allow Bolton and Mick to proceed with doing this test well.
No. Separate, right, aren't we?
It'd probably be good to do two separate motions. Test well and approving proceeding with plans and specifications. You could do... Either do it together or do it separately.
Then it's... I'm sorry.
Okay. So this is for the test well?
This is to... Whatever you want to do.
Which one needs to be... Which one would you like to reverse?
Right now, we have it as authorization to proceed with the plans and specs.
Okay, I will make a motion to allow Bolton and Mick to proceed with the plans and specs.
At an estimated $50,000 to $60,000.
An estimated $50,000 to $60,000.
Is there a second? Full second. Joe?
Aye.
I will vote aye. Lloyd?
No.
Ben?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Next, Ben. Or anyone. Or anybody.
I'll make a motion to move forward and approve the Trout... Is this the right one? The Trout Companies' test well for $21,665.
Full second then.
Joe?
Aye.
Lloyd?
No.
Ben?
Aye.
I will vote aye. Motion passes three to one.
You're out. You need to stop and come on to the chief.
Five-minute recess.
Probably takes a minute.
I know. What is it? There isn't here. No, no.
We just copied it, full-on discussion. Because a lot of it's not...
Okay, we're back. Okay, there is the old business. Moving on to new business, Resolution 2018-03, council appointments. And the question was just asked if I did this, and I did not. It was just pretty much photocopied from last year. So we will have discussion on it. Okay. Currently, we have as acting mayor Lloyd Johnson. Is there any concerns about that? None. Okay, Jill, any? No, we're good? Chamber of Commerce rep is currently me. I would ask that somebody else take that, because my work schedule does not allow it. They meet the fourth Thursday of the month. Right around noon for lunch hour, it's about an hour long. Do you want the city administrator like you had before? Yeah, maybe was. Was, and I mean, if Dale can continue to, and if there's, you know, an alternate council member, that might want to. So, yeah, we'll put Dale in there, because it, you know, it was either me or maybe. But if there's a council member too, that might want to. You know, anybody want to? Your work schedule. You know what?
You need a second one?
Just an alternate, Dale can't make it, so... Is anybody okay with Lloyd?
Sure.
Okay. I can still do Community Ed, if that's not a problem?
Go for it, Del.
Okay. EDA currently just says City Council, but it is also City Council and Tracy Burnell. And also, with that, the EDA, we haven't had an EDA meeting, and we've missed the last two. We missed the one in November, we missed the one in January. So the next one, we will have to do our appointments of chairperson, vice chair, secretary, and all that kind of stuff too, so... Fire Department Emergency Management is chief. Emergency Management Director is Kevin Triplet. Matt Minar is fire chief. Council liaison, continuing to be Ben.
Sure.
Okay. Good, and alternate is Jill?
Yep.
Okay. Highway 12 Development is currently Graham Stones is the chair, Ellen Stones, John Barnum, Sylvia Henry, and Hal Galus. Any concerns on that?
So is it Hal Galus plus one vacancy? Or is...
Well, Hal Galus is the vacancy. He's currently been on that commission, but there was questions on it, so... Anybody have any concerns on that? And the staff person as well is... Well, it says Dale, but Sean has been attending them meetings as well, which then does say engineers. Management Coordinating Committee members is myself, Jill, Sean, Dale, and Kevin. But it is also posted, it is typically posted, so pretty much anybody can attend. Any questions or concerns there?
Aye.
Anybody else? Any? Fine. Okay, moving forward, Park and Rep Commission is Brooke Clue as the chair. Matt Russell is the vice chair. Abby Myers is the secretary. Kurt and Christina. We still have two vacancies, hoping to fill that one quite soon. I am the council liaison, if that's okay. Alternate is Lloyd, and staff coordinator is Sean. Good?
Good.
Awesome. Planning and zoning, we added Chuck Smallwood as continue as the chair. Tracy Burnell. We don't have a vice chair or any... Did they do that? Did you guys do that?
The vice chair, I think, is still in.
Did you do your appointments or not yet here in jail?
Not yet.
Probably not, okay.
Because that was a December meeting.
Right. Okay. Okay, so currently, it's Chuck Smallwood as the chair. Tracy Burnell, Kurt Anderson, Brooke Clue, Barry Rangbacher, and Sylvia Henry. Planning and zoning, council liaison is Lloyd with an alternate, Melissa. Mark Haltis and Dale Powers as our staff people. Finance Committee, continuing to be Ben and Melissa with Wendy and Dale.
Sure.
Okay. Utility Emergency Board, we've never done this, but it's myself and Sean.
Hopefully, never will have to.
All right. Continue to be Jill and Melissa as the mantra stays. Jill first, Melissa as an alternate. Wright County, the WPA is Lloyd and Wendy. Correct? Good?
He's got Lloyd and then me as the alternate, but I actually have the one that's been going, so I don't know if you want to turn those...
You want to switch them around?
You don't make any difference.
I can continue going.
Okay, yep, all right. And then it did say in, under city meetings, the EDA, City Hall, it did say the second Tuesday, but in reality, we are the Monday of council meetings every two months.
Tell her anyone. Say that again.
We meet every two months. Because right now, it says every other...
Every other.
It says the second Tuesday, but we meet on the Monday at 6:00 again for EDA. Prior to the council, every two months.
So it's every other month?
Yep.
First month or second?
Yep. So everything's good there?
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Moving on. The 2018 fee schedule is in there as well.
He's got this as a resolution, so you need to pass the resolution.
I've got one that's there, council.
Oh, sorry.
On the council meeting schedule on the last page, I think there needs to be some coverage on potential fourth Monday also.
I missed it. I have that written here. Yes, because we typically do have, and we put this fourth Monday as a workshop as needed. Just wanted. Okay. So then I would make a motion to pass Resolution 2018-03, council appointments.
Aye, sir.
I, Ben.
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Jill? Aye. Motion passes four to zero. Then we have the 2018 fee schedule, review of existing fees.
We should probably table that, though, ours gets back in this.
Right, we're going to add that with our table discussion of the workshop for the lot. Changing that. So if we want to set that, is everybody then available that fourth Monday?
What time?
What day is that?
January 29th.
Tell what time.
Wait, I like, I'm sorry, there's five Mondays this month. January 22nd.
What time?
Does that work?
Is everybody available?
It's good with me.
You good?
After 6:00, yeah.
After 6:00? How about at 6:00?
Sure.
Okay. Does that work for staff? Good?
They're here or seeing?
Wherever. Oh, because we're inviting planning and zoning, though, it's not even here.
It's going to be city.
So it'll probably be here from where from.
What was the date again for that?
The 22nd at 6:00. Okay, moving forward, request for proposals of city attorney, city engineer, and the odd firm.
And West Metro.
Oh, yep, and West Metro.
Metro West.
Metro West. And this is not... I have requested doing the city attorney with multiple discussions with staff and council. And so it was just kind of put on that we look at all of our consultants.
Thanks, that's long overdue.
Is there any... We're going to do each of these individually, just because, so it makes it more clarified for everybody. City attorney currently is at Burke Lammers. About six months ago, we had Andy Pratt was our city attorney, where we had some issues, a lot with them. We had their firm come out and talk to us. And at that point, we got Tom Lunin, and things have not really not changed. We still have multiple things that goes back to 2015 that this firm has not been... We still have multiple things that goes back to 2015 that this firm has not finished or completed for us, which has cost us multiple legal fees. So, it is requested, and we don't even have an attorney here today. The attorneys are supposed to also have their office hours, the Monday of council meetings from 2:00 to 7:00, you know, so that we can discuss anything that we need to, if they're not, they haven't been available for that. We also have to take into consideration that we do have negotiations starting this month, which we do not even have an attorney set is ready for that. I did talk to, apparently her name is Leida, which they, is their employment attorney. But the firm, in talking with staff too, the firm is just, it's time. So, I will make a recommendation to do an RFP for City Attorneys. Is there any to? We're not under any sort of contract, are we? No.
No.
We are just, just a retainer, is all we are with them.
That was one of the reasons why we picked them, because there was a couple, I believe, when we interviewed them back in March of 14, that there were a couple that they wanted some contracts versus retainer.
Right, right, and they don't. A second motion. Quick, is there any other discussion on this? Nope. Moving forward, then we will go with Ben.
Aye.
Lloyd.
Aye.
I will go, aye, and Jill, aye. Motion passes 4-0 to proceed with an RFP for City Attorney. Next is City Engineer, which is Bolton Make, our City Engineer is currently Justin Knopf. Uh, there is informational packet over there on the table for, we do apologize if there's only one packet over there, but people are welcome to look at it for the items that Bolton Make has done for the city. I think we did discuss that we've been here for 18 years. There has been a lot of concern within residents, myself, in invoicing some projects that have been, that have gone on in the city. Any questions that I have had on invoicing though, Justin has answered all those questions and given more clarification on them. But as many that are sitting here today have stated, it is the, our obligation to look for second opinions on some of the items that we have within the city or some of the projects we have within the city. So, any discussion on that?
Well, there was an article in a neighboring paper about competition as healthy for cities and taxpayers, and that's our job is for the taxpayers. So, there really should be no question as to not doing this. And you don't know, maybe Bolton Make will still be the best one to basically give the taxpayers what were elected.
Along that line, I did receive some private messages in regards to, and there is, I mean, I don't always take social media at heart because it's social media. But a lot of questions on it currently have been, why are we not under contract, which we don't wanna be under contract? Why are we not looking at other fees, other costs, getting second opinions? And I did get multiple private messages as well in regards to, it is our due diligence to check other firms, if not yearly, you know, every three to five years. It could be a huge tax save to the city, or if, you know, Bolton Make, as Lloyd said, Bolton Make could still come in as the best firm, but what if they choose not to come in at all? That's their choice. That is choice that they have and, you know, I can't force them to put a bid out there and, you know, do whatever, but it is responsibility, I believe, to at least look, you know? They could come in as the best, we don't know.
Do you know when the last time was that we had an RFP for engineering?
They did their 18 years.
18 years?
Well, the.
I don't think we.
It was prior to 18 years ago.
I just think there was.
There was nothing.
I don't think so.
Was 18 years ago the first time we had an engineer in for many years?
No, we had one prior to that. Is there any other discussion, comments or questions? Not from the audience, it's from the council. Oh, I'm sorry, Kurt.
What, you always told Kurt?
I'm sorry. No idea. I keep thinking, sorry.
My name is Matt Russell, I live on 28 Feser Bridge Drive, here in Montrose. I guess my only questions would be, I know, I am, I am a registered engineer in the state of Minnesota. I don't do the same thing as Justin does, but I just do, do work with federal, state, other agencies like that. I mean, Justin, maybe you can clarify this, you're not under any IDIQ kind of contracts or anything like that, it's just your professional range on an hourly, you know, estimate on certain projects and those just get approved based on that. Do you guys submit a hard hourly not to exceed value on projects or is there? Or does that depend on the size of the project or?
I think there, maybe, Council, if you want me to answer that, I, if you look at the letter that I provided you, maybe there's a little more background information on that. You know, industry standard typically, and we can also tailor our fees or how, I should say, we can tailor how we structure that to however the council desires, we do it differently for each city based upon how you desire to do it, whether it be a lump sum fee, percentage of construction, hourly not to exceed. In the past, we've always budgeted for around 20% of construction cost for our fees, but then we, we, we never go up and above, above the amount, so essentially it's hourly not to exceed. And as you can see in your letter, there was, for the last 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8 projects that have been completed for the city, as far as like city-type projects, there's a percentage of construction cost of what our fees ended up to be the final amounts. And industry standard, a lot of times it's between 18 and 25% of construction cost. You can see most of those are well underneath that, that standard, so. It ends up to be because of our efficiencies in the city and it ends up to be quite a bit less than that. You're only, you're only right now, you don't pay for work sometimes.
I know, I mean, other ways I've, at my services gotten was either you go through a contract, whether it's a two-year, five-year contract as an IDIQ, which would basically be your submitting an RFP, having multiple firms propose on that, they're basically your engineer for that pre-deserved lump time. No matter how much work you have or not, usually have a nice range in there. And then, or you can do it where you're adjusted more or less as a city engineer, maybe just put a stipulate at anything above an estimated value of, say, $100,000. Maybe the city wants to go for a specific project, not for a day-to-day, I mean, I even have a lot of Minnesota State, it's all that, once you get above a certain threshold, it has to go public. It has to. But I do a lot of projects that are $10,000, $15,000. Just little things, they don't wanna go get 10 people, they want one or two, just get it done short-term. But on the bigger stuff, you still have to go up to public. And I don't think that's a, a bad way to go. I don't know if other cities do that, even once you get to a certain order value. It does, I guess, I'm not really sure, I don't do municipal type stuff, I do, like you said, I do HVAC, I do stuff inside the building, a lot of retrofit work, stuff like that, so. It's not really, I mean, I don't, I don't know how it works on that side. And I don't, there's.
Yeah, go ahead. I don't know.
Each city does it a little bit different, I would say most of the time, cities with populations around Montrose's size typically picks a dedicated city engineer to do all their projects for them, just because there's not really enough projects to warrant, I mean, you, you get some benefit by having that, having that, you know, that same person.
No, I totally agree, having that working relationship built up. Yeah. You might sell a threshold at something even around relatively large, so that in the case a, you know, a pump house is operating, and I totally agree with you, I mean, $100,000 to me is, for a project that, for that many dispos being involved, really is not that much money. I mean, I've had bigger, you know, a million dollar project, I'm just replacing Boyd, it's a $100,000 fee. Once you start getting a dozen people involved for a month, it's a lot of matters. And it, it adds up really, really fast. And it is job dropping expense, it really is.
But as taxpayer, are you okay with us just going with whatever one engineer is saying or looking out and getting the best bang for our buck, I should say?
I like to see, I mean, I wouldn't mind seeing if it gets above a certain threshold, like you're saying, that $100,000, I mean, when I can, when we compete with other firms, it's like a $10,000 project, they might be nine and a half, I might be 10 and a half. You know, that's your, there's not a lot of actual dollars and cents off, but when you're talking, you know, a $300,000 fee, you know, somebody might be 300, somebody might be 250, and that, you know, percentage change ends up being a lot of money.
Because they, last year we spent about a quarter million dollars.
I believe it. I guess all I did. See you.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Matt.
Yep.
Is there any other discussion?
I don't think it's actually, it's our duty to go ahead with it because complications, nothing.
The motion then, or?
I'll make a motion to. Go ahead with the hard RFPs where you're calling.
Second? I'll make a second, I will second that, I should say. Is there any discussion? All right, um, Ben.
I will, aye.
I will, aye? Jill?
No.
I will, aye.
I will, aye.
Motion passes 3 to 1 to continue with an RFP for City Engineers. Moving forward with the Audit Firm, our current Audit Firm is Abdo Akonmeyer. We only really see these guys twice a year. Currently, they, they do a good job for the city, we are very high ranked within the state as discussion with staff. They, our, the firm that we used to have, used to come in and they would be here for, you know, a few weeks at a time, but now currently, Abdo can come in and be here for a couple of days at a time because they have everything, they're familiar with their Bannion system, they're familiar with, what else do we have, Wendy?
They use our Lidsurfish, they actually subscribe to Bannion itself, so, starting in about October or November, they have me start downloading my, my fund accounting and all our utility stuff to Bannion to their support system, and then Abdo can log in and they can get all the information, so they actually start all the pre-audit without even coming out. So they can watch a lot of our stuff throughout the year.
Along with that, somewhat concerned with Abdo was, again, having different eyes, looking at the, at the, all the pieces to the puzzle, but with discussion with staff, we already have that. We have the same gentleman that comes and gives the, you know, the final information to us, but the actual firm itself sends in somebody different every year, if not every two years. So there's always somebody looking, you know, at the final dollar amounts, and they discuss with staff and, you know, they've even met with different council persons if we ever had any concerns or questions. So, I will make the motion to continue with Abdo Akonmeyer, or if there's any discussion, concerns on it.
I'll second your motion.
Ben.
Aye.
Lloyd.
Aye.
I will, aye, and Jill, aye. Okay, motion is then to continue with Abdo Akonmeyer for our. Audit Firm. I'm gonna let you do Metro West.
Okay, well, I've just had a lot of complaints from residents about the way they do things or whatever, and the bill seems like they've been kinda high, like last month here now it's for $5,000. I know we've got a couple of buildings going, but for $5,000 for inspection.
There's like 15 out by the disco, of course, but right now.
Yeah.
There's one going next to Abby who was just in here, there's.
What does that cost?
A dozen.
A dozen townhomes.
We don't pay the building inspector out of our pocket, it all is collected with building permits. And the building permit fees are set by the state of Minnesota. So, the money that we pay to Metro West has been collected with the building permits based on the fee schedule that we have adopted, which right now we are using 1985. Because the newer you get, the higher the rate goes on the building permits. So, those fees that, that Metro West, that they bill us, are money, is money that we've already collected with the building permits.
But why do we even collect it, or?
What do you mean?
If we just gonna trade, trade money?
Well, we have to collect it as a city because they're getting the building permit from us, and then Metro West, when they finalize the building permit out, so once they finalize, or issue a certificate of occupancy for that permit, then they bill us for it and we pay them, we get to keep half and they take half. So if the building permit is, say you're just gonna do a roof on your house and it's $51, the state gets $1, the city of Montrose gets $25, and the building inspector gets $25. So the bill that you see, it's gonna fluctuate every month based on how many permits that they actually finalize. So the big one that you're looking at is all of the KC permits on it, and the KC's building permits were close to $10,000. So, we're not paying the building inspector out of any tax dollars money. It's all, I mean, it's, I shouldn't say out of tax dollar money, it's, but it's their building permits that they're pulling, so it's you, if you pull a building permit, you pay whatever the state fee is, or the fee is based on the state building code, and then they get half of it and we get half of it as a city.
Pardon me, they used to get 85%.
We changed that about 15 years ago.
They reshuffled it definitely different ways, believe me. Both, uh, they need to go.
Who are other options for building inspector?
I don't have any idea. They do a big portion of this area. I can't say one thing that's, I don't know what other, where their other firms are, I don't have any idea of who does it. I mean, I think there's individuals that do it, but the, the one nice thing about Metro West is it's a big company, so if somebody's on vacation, they make sure we have somebody else, so if somebody, you know, if you have a building inspector that just does it on his own and he decides to take a two-week vacation, I don't know if he's lined somebody else up to do his permit inspection, or, I mean, to do the building inspections or how that works, I have no idea. They've, I just know of all this, the majority of the cities in this area, we use Metro West.
And we actually.
There's a few, I think, that do actually have their own, but it's pretty costly, like, maybe Delmo and Watertown might share somebody, I'm not sure, but, or if they, I know Watertown doesn't use Metro West, but I don't know about Delmo.
I don't think Delmo does either.
I think they do share between the two cities.
Yeah, Watertown and Delmo.
So, um.
But we have a new building inspector within the last two years, correct?
Uh, within the last few months.
Oh, because the one retired?
Yep, yes.
It's the culture, pardon me, it's the culture of the company. If Wendy likes them, beware. And of course, I feel too, it wouldn't hurt to talk to anybody else in case of a different fee.
Well, that's the state fee.
It's depending, yeah, it depends on whatever the city adopts as their, as the state, yeah, the state building code is whichever one you adopt. So, right now, us and Waverly are the only ones at eighty-five, all the other cities are on ninety-seven around us. And the, and the closer you get to the metro, they're even higher. They're like in two thousand and five and two thousand and seven, even higher than that. So that makes the permit fees go up even higher. So those fees aren't gonna change no matter who you go with.
So actually, it doesn't matter what the permit fee is, we get it all back.
We get half of it back.
And it doesn't matter who you have for a building inspector, because you're still going to, it depends on what state building code you adopt.
We still negotiate what percentage they get.
I believe that's also set by the state, depending on which B you adopt.
Well, if it was eighty-five percent before, I don't think it was.
Then we were not on the eighty-five, when I started here, we were back on nineteen seventy-something. And at that time, it was seventy-five percent and twenty-five percent, it wasn't eighty-five.
Well, you want them, because if you want somebody beat up, they'll do it for you.
And it came to, then we went to the nineteen, or the nineteen eighty-five fee schedule or state code, and it went to fifty-fifty. So I believe it depends on what state code you adopt.
So you said we're on the eighty-five one right now?
Yes, we used to be on nineteen seventy-something, and that was the seventy-five percent and twenty-five percent, and then it changed when we went to eighty-five.
Okay, we're just discussing the fact that Joe wasn't even born yet. Yeah, so, sorry.
Pardon me, the only, the only reason they went off to eighty-five seven years ago, because, I'm sorry, but I was asking too many questions. Then magically, they reshuffled the deck after that.
Is there a way that you could do some research and figure out where that percentage came from? Whether it really is from the state and be based on the eighty-five schedule that you're on? And maybe table this topic?
Fifty-fifty percent?
Right.
Well, I think that topic is gonna come up in our workshop. Because.
It's the fee schedule.
So if you want to table that part of it, you can.
And maybe just have a little bit of data on, you know, if you go to the two thousand something or the nineteen ninety-seventh's schedule. This is your rates and this is your percentage.
I assume that's just the fee schedule, right? Because the building code is still twenty-twelve by the state of Minnesota.
Right, but I think they, we're still on the nineteen eighty-five's building, state building code, fee schedule, whatever it's called.
Something, but the building code is still twenty-twelve.
Yeah, he's still using the current laws.
It's twenty-twelve.
Yeah, right, but it's just, just.
Your fee schedule is still last.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So should we table this until the workshop?
Well, that's up to you, or council.
It's, you, we're the one who wanted to bring it, so we, we.
Well, let's table it for the workshop. I'll make that motion.
I think you just need a consensus.
Consensus to tabling it?
Alright.
Pardon me, are you looking at the city assessor also?
Just for your information, right now, the city assessor is Dwayne Swenson.
We know, and you should be looking at it.
He is only going to do assessing through twenty eighteen, so in twenty eighteen, we need to look for a new assessor, he is retiring.
Good riddance.
Okay.
So, that's, he informed us, or informed me a few months ago, week or two ago when he came in, that he's going to stay down.
Okay.
So our choices are to either go with the county itself, who offers the service, or contract with another individual who's licensed. So that's something that you'll have to discuss.
And are you?
Sometime throughout this year, because no idea is starting next year.
Pardon me, we do need a city assessor that does not go up and look in the windows when nobody's home, and that's what he does. I mean, that's crossing the line.
All right, moving on to item D, proclamation. The only information I have on this is the proclamation commencing in the city of Montreal School Choice Week, which is our Montreal Elementary School. So we, do we need, how do these work, Wendy, I've never done this.
You just need to read it and just say this, I mean, it says, I think the last sentence says what you're going, I think.
Okay. Whereas all children in the city of Montreal should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas the city of Montreal recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in the city to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the city of Montreal, and whereas the city of Montreal is home to be a multitude of excellent education options from which parents can choose for their children, and whereas an educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrants of our community, and whereas our area has many high-quality teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Michelle Arnold, do hereby authorize January twenty-first through January twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, as the city of Montreal School of Choice Week, and I call this observance to that attention to all of our citizens. All right. Upcoming meetings, planning and zoning is January seventeenth of twenty eighteen at seven o'clock. Management Coordinating Committee meeting, it's a lot to say now, is Monday, February fifth. And Park and Rex next meeting is February fifth as well, at seven. At seven, oh wait a minute, Park and Rex is at five thirty. And then we have the town hall meeting, February twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
Six, twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, okay.
At seven PM, topic to be determined, Abby later, Nate.
I think Lloyd was confusing the workshop, January twenty-second.
January twenty-second is our workshop. Oh, which, yeah, we should, yeah, good job.
I just.
Yes. Is there any acknowledgements?
I'd like to acknowledge Tom Cortzes, for his years of service on Montreal's Fire Department. I know at the last meeting, there were quite a few firefighters that were very sad to hear his leaving, so I'm sad that he's leaving my development, so.
Anybody else?
I want to thank everybody for showing up tonight, hopefully keep on going.
Thanks, Lloyd.
Okay. Ben already hit on it for Tom, for his five years. And then Brew hit on the fellow workers of the fire department for the break out there. And Connor, of course, for being able to help him with that. Sean, because he was out there too. Jason for continual weekends while we had staff gone. Sean as well, for helping out, getting things done. Anybody else?
Yes, I would like to acknowledge Jason also for his dedication to the job for the last two months he did, has been exemplary.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. And also, I'd like to acknowledge Fire Department for helping us with their funding.
Is there a motion to adjourn? I'll be favored.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Or no, Jill did, sorry. Jill did, nobody's second. Nobody's second. From our honor favor.